This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.
Miko, you ready?
We're ready.
Chip, you ready? Okay, we'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Loudoun Council Meeting for the month of October. A few housekeeping items first before we get into our agenda. Notice of electronic meeting access to ensure government operations continue to function openly and transparently during the COVID-19 emergency while taking measures to protect the health and safety of citizens and government officials. Governor Bill Lee issued Executive Order Number 16 on March 20 of this year, which allows governing bodies to conduct essential business by electronic means. Electronic meeting access and information is available at the cityofloudonten.org website, and we have some joined by Zoom it looks like tonight. So thank you all for joining with us. One other item I'd like to bring up, as many of you know, we lost a member of our community who was very active in civil service for many, many years. I'd like to just read a little bit of Gene Lambert, I guess, testimonies of him and his civil service. He was born July 21, 1932, passed away October 16, 2020. He served as a City of Loudoun Commissioner from July 1, 1969, to 1973. He was the mayor for the City of Loudoun from July 1973 to June 1985. And then City Councilmember Vice Mayor, July 1989 to June 2005. The Loudoun Utility Board, he served as council representative July 17, 1989. He was elected chairman through June 2005. He declined to run for council for the term beginning July 2005. And in November 2005, he was appointed to fill the Vice Mayor Nancy James's seat. And then in December 2005 to December 2011, he was appointed as Vice Mayor. And LUB, October 2011 to October 2015, he filled the vacant position of Jack Randolph. So as you tell from that reading, a very civil-minded person, and I know many that knew him and count him as a friend. And if we could, I'd like to have just a moment of silence before we get into our meeting and just remember his family. All right, thank you. I want to thank the police and fire and utilities for what they did during the funeral procession. I thought that was, the families touched by that. I think that was a good gesture by our crew, and y'all did a very good job with that. At this time, we're going to ask Chief Webb to lead our invocation. Our pastor that was going to be here tonight is under the weather, so he's going to lead our invocation. Then we have a special guest for our pledge of allegiance. So if you'd stand, Chief Webb, you can lead our invocation.
Let's pray. No scathing grasses ever, Father, nor would come to you in prayer. Thank you, Lord, for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon our families and our community. We thank for the risen Savior, Jesus Christ. We pray, Lord, that during this meeting, that the Holy Spirit will lead, guide, direct us, watch over us, protect all of us. We pray with your wisdom that we can make decisions. In these things, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the loyalty for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. I want to thank Hunter for leading our pledge tonight. Hunter is a fourth grader at Loudoun Elementary School. He's also the son of Joey and Amy Finch. Joey is a part-time policeman here with our police force. Something I'm going to start doing now is having a young person lead our pledge. So I've asked Hunter to come forward. I got a gift to give him, so Hunter can meet me up here in the front. I have a flag, and we have a Loudoun pin, okay?
The flag goes a little bit lower so I can see it over here. That's awesome. Thank you.
Let's give Hunter a round of thank you. We'll start them young. Hunter may be up here one day, you know? We'll ask for the roll call of attendance, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Brewster.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. On behalf of the council and the staff, I want to welcome you here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and observe how their government does business. We appreciate that you took time out of your schedule to be here tonight to see how your city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have a copy, you can pick one up at the table here in the front. This agenda is your guide to the topics we're going to discuss tonight. In order to conduct efficient businesslike meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens Input, where anyone who has signed in to speak to council is encouraged to do so. We do however ask that you wait until you've been recognized before you speak. After being recognized, please approach the podium and address the council and observe three simple rules. Please state your name for the records, address all your questions to myself as the chairman, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, and any other inappropriate conduct. Once this portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You're welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments may be limited. We ask everyone, remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight, and it's a very important responsibility for all of us. Help us do this business by observing the rules we've established for these meetings. Again, we're welcome to the Loudoun City Council meeting. We're glad that everyone took the time to be here tonight. With that, I'll ask if there's any changes to the agenda. Everyone has a copy of the agenda. Are there any deletions or additions? Any questions about the agenda? Do we need to make any changes before we adopt it? If none, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Councilman James. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Brewster, thank you. Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have come to the portion of citizens input, those that have signed in. We have two. First one is Richard Anklund, I think. Mr. Anklund, if you'll come forward to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Richard Anklund. I live in Tellico Village, and I've been attending Solid Waste Commission meetings.
Thank you.
Start over. My name is Richard Anklund. I live in Tellico Village, and I've been attending both Loudoun County Solid Waste Commission meetings, county meetings. And I've come before you today with a six-page package on reasons why not to approve the Loudoun County Solid Waste Commission SANTAC Extended Amendment.
Can't hear you, Richard.
I'm sorry?
Okay, my bad.
Just one more.
No, the one next to the side. You can pull it out of the thing. You can pull it out of the handle right there. Yeah, pull it down.
All right. I've attended these meetings for multiple years, and I find nothing in this contract amendment that's beneficial to the county. You'll hear Mr. Shaver at the county commission meeting talk about, well, we're getting rid of the bond. The bond is nothing, because what's happening is the SANTAC's telling you all that it's a $200,000-year expenditure, which is not true. It's more like $50,000. And that amount of money will decrease as you go forward closing cells. One of the things that gets mortalized in this whole extension is SANTAC's not closing cells, which I find important. What happens is, you've got a number of cells up there that are already at height 1075. The extension carries through with it 1125 is the maximum elevation, which is 50 feet higher than what's up there now. You can visualize that, that's a five-story building. They're claiming they will not go above 1093, which is 18 feet above existing grade, and that's with finished grade. But they're offering to give us more money in the host fee, and using their own data, their own charts, and I presented this same information both to the county commission last week and the solid waste commission. They're claiming a 1.75 differential from 3.75 to 5.5. Actually, they're paying us 3.96 right now, so there's a .21% that's short that they're counting or double counting. When you do the mathematics, as is shown on page three or two in this package, at the current 500 tons per day, you're only going to end up with $54,000 a year, not the 150 that they're alluding to. To get to the 150, you have to go back to the 800 that they were doing back in the 2007 to 2010 timeframe. That changes the closure years from 18 currently back to 12. Now, I'm not sure if that means anything to anybody, except when you look at the amendment, they want to increase this whole area footprint from the current 53 up to 67, which is another 14 acres beyond. And if you look at Attachment 5, which is an exhibit that I included, which shows the cells and how they would proceed through the next 14 years, filling, they leave 14 acres for future development. And they specifically call it out in the contract, or 10.8 acres, excuse me. They're only going to close 39 acres between now and the end of this extension, which doesn't occur until 2038. My concern is, why are they not closing as they go, which is what's in the contract today? Why are you saying that every cell I close will eventually cost me $170,000 versus $125 today? That's a $50,000 differential. You could mitigate the surety bond from what, $50,000 a year down by closing cells as you go. The other big thing that I do not care for in this whole amendment is the soil that would be taken across some 70 acres, 79.2 to be exact, of the 120 that's been purchased. 1.2 million acres. To give you an idea of how much soil that is, for those of you who have crossed the bridge over the Tennessee River toward Tellico Village, when they built up that mound of dirt to the next one that's the bridge over.
One, one, two, maybe yards.
The mound of dirt, that was 750,000 acres. You're talking another 500,000 acres of, or cubic yards of dirt above that. That's going to leave a hole in that ground at least 20 feet deep across the 80 acres. What are we going to do with that at the end of 2038? Or, or are they setting a duck up to make this landfill last for another 50 years? There's too many things, and I won't go into every detail that I put in here, but I hope that you would take the time to read it. And I know Ms. Bevins is on the, on the solid waste, Tim's wife Kelly's on both the solid waste and the county. And I'm not saying anything out of turn here that I haven't said publicly in the end of the county commission meeting, the solid waste commission meeting, or now for my first time in front of you all. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. If you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them. I know you haven't had a chance to look at this package, but I can be reached at home anytime, and if you so choose. Right now, I appreciate the time you've given me. Thank you very much, and I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Anklund.
Thank you.
Next one on the signed sheet was Dr. Gatter, I think. Dr. Gatter, you still want to address the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have the floor, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you so much, Mayor Harris. I'm here as a representative of the Recreation Advisory Committee. And the Recreation Advisory Committee met last week, and we would like to respectfully request to the council to make some kind of disposition on the current community center proposal that we discussed at the last city council meeting. And we would like, I guess, some disposition on that before we pursue any other secondary options that might not be available. As you recall, at the last city council meeting, there was some discussion that the community center would be discussed at the workshop. I think that was put on hold pending meeting of the Recreation Advisory Committee. And our wish, and again, a bit respectful wish, is that the council would take this matter into consideration and report back to the committee some type of decision in regard to the current proposal.
Okay, so I think the request was for us to vote on the submitted proposal from the Recreation Advisory Committee that was...
And I'll say, Mayor Harris, it has to be done from a, it is a respect. I'm just, we would not completely, today, we have not received any feedback from the council and everybody, and I'm just asking for some kind of feedback. Either now or after some further discussion later on.
Okay. Council Brewster?
I think that Todd's been working diligently trying to find the money so alive, and we have a board meeting tomorrow night, and I would encourage everybody to come.
You want to give the time of that?
It's 5:30.
5:30, is it here?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we could really hatch this thing out tomorrow night at 5:30, see what we can come up with. Does that sound good to you, Doc?
Is that Mr. Brewster?
Yes, the vice speaker.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm encouraging all of the council to come to the board meeting tomorrow night, and let's get this thing worked out and see what we can do out of it.
Sounds great.
But not on the agenda tonight?
We certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, we couldn't take any action on it tonight as far as the request that was previously presented, but we can certainly encourage everyone to come to the meeting tomorrow night.
We're not forgetting about it. We're just trying to find the money to take care of it, and it's hard to do right now.
Is that okay with you, Dr. Gatter?
That sounds great.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Anything else?
No, that's not good.
Okay, I think that was the last one on the sheet.
Anyone else on Zoom who wants to speak?
Anyone else that's joined by Zoom, need to speak, we'll unmute you. Nobody? Okay. We'll continue on with our agenda items. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting September 28, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed the minutes of our last regular meeting and recommend they be approved.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion made by Dixon, do I have a second?
Second, I'll have a second.
Second by James to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Next item is fuel bid for October 21, 2020. As you can see, the low bid for the purchase of fuel was received October 21 from Rogers Petroleum for the projected amount of $10,048 unleaded gasoline, $1.27. Low sulfur, Dundide diesel, $1.22. We have a motion to approve the fuel bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the fuel bid.
Motion made by Dixon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Brewster. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Next item is ordinance on second reading to amend the zoning map of the City of Loudoun, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203, 13-7-204, the Tennessee code annotated, to rezone property located on Mulberry Street, tax map 041H, group F, parcels 1, 001, 002, and 003, from P1 Professional and Civic District with H1 Historic Overlay, and C2 Highway Business District with the H1 Historic Overlay. Public hearing was held with no comments. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance on second reading?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Brewster, a second by James. Any questions about the rezoning? Okay, we'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Evans?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item is a resolution. A resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of water and sewer system revenue bonds of the City of Loudoun, Tennessee, and one or more services as tax-exempt bonds or taxable bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 20 million. I was hoping that was putting the typo or something.
Mr. Mayor, the current market climate has favorable interest rates available to it. We're exploring a number of options. There's one trailing option that we will not have probably until the November meeting.
Okay.
This is water and sewer debt, and we would like this to come in the form of a recommendation to you from LUB. So to give us time to secure this further competitive quote, we would ask it to be tabled at this time.
Okay. All right, as you can see, it says that a recommendation from LUB will be presented, and that's not ready. So is it okay with everyone that we table that? Okay, that'll be tabled till next month. Thank you. Next is a resolution declaring the intent of the City of Loudoun, Tennessee to reimburse itself for certain expenditures relating to paving projects with the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city. Manager Ross?
Yeah, this is a necessary response to a request at your workshop, which was to attempt to complete paving of at least a couple of streets this fall. Those streets will be dealt with later on the agenda. But in order to facilitate that with debt, which is not yet issuance but is forthcoming, we ask that you pass this reimbursement resolution.
So I understand what that's, taking the money out of general funding and putting it back, you know, so we don't miss the paving season, I think. Would I like to see that start as soon as possible?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a motion made by Councilman Brewster? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilmember Dixon. Any questions? And as Manager Ross said, we'll get into the quote next item, so. Okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Resolution passes. Next is a resolution for accepting quotes for street resurfacing.
Yes, this is the direct response to the request to pave Robinson Drive and Collins Street. Public Works Director Michael Hoag solicited a number of quotes and two certain specifications. Those specifications are included in your packet, and just like, Michael's here tonight, would you like to come forward and disclose your recommended quote for these two streets?
Sure. Thank you, Manager. Yeah, in response to the council's desire to pave before the end of the calendar year, we've gathered some quotes from previous respondents to paving packages that we've advertised for. Three paving contractors responded out of five. You can see the quotes before. The lowest apparent bidder was Patty Construction at $263,500. Being the low apparent bidder, that would be the contractor recommended for selection. This will be for Robinson Road and Collins Street, where it deadens through Path Killer Trail.
We've worked with Patty before, correct?
Yeah. This is my opinion. Duracap's did us a great job.
They did, didn't they do Ward?
Yeah. In my opinion, if you look, if you drive 321, Patty did that. It's really rough. The interstate out here between Loudoun and Sweetwater that was done four years ago, it's already, I just don't know about the quality of Patty anymore. My push would be go with Duracap, marry up with them, and let them get it done. Was there a date when they could do it?
They were all notified that the desire was for completion before the end of the calendar year.
Is there any infrastructure that has to be taken care of first with these streets?
No.
Okay.
Later on, Collins, but that's on down the road. They're going to do Church Ferry.
Any discussion, as Councilman Brewster brought up, about Duracap? Councilmember James, do you have any discussion?
You know, it's no denying that Duracap done a great job. I mean, it's been over a year now, and we've got a problem with anything they've done anywhere that's worked, I mean. But, you know, I know they're not the low bidder, so I, you know, I'm open-minded to whatever you guys want to do. I mean, it's not, it's not, I know we're customary to take the low bid. I know that, that's just normally what we do, you know?
And we don't have to do that, like you said.
I know, I know we don't, and I don't have a problem with whatever we do. I mean, I really don't. It's up to the guys, y'all decide, and I'll be glad to go wherever you want to go.
If someone wants to make a motion for that, we'll...
I'll make a motion.
That we...
That we go with Duracap?
Okay, we have a motion to accept the quote from Duracap at 278-135. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman James, second. Any questions about that? Mike, will you have any questions to ask? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Duracap gets the quote, thank you. Next item is resolution to authorize the Loudoun Police Department Officer Association their fundraiser for the Children's Christmas Fund. The dates are listed here. That's the Fire and Police Turkey Shoot scheduled for November 7, 14, and 21. We all know what the purpose of this turkey shoot is, to aid the Children's Christmas Fund. The fund is accepted by the Loudoun Police Department Officer Association. Resolution authorizes the discharge of firearms within the city limits. And I think, as Chief Webb mentioned last night, or last workshop, we want to make sure the fire department gets that recognition as well, because they participate in that turkey shoot and Children's Christmas Fund as well.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion by Councilmember Evans? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Brewster? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. You can fire them off, Mayor. We do have an appointment, I have an appointment for the Recreation Advisory Committee. I make this as a nomination. I have to have consent from the city council. I'd like to nominate Admiral Webster, assistant here in Loudoun. I think he comes with, Mark Carroll's talked to him, he's willing to serve. So do I have the, all those, I have a motion to nominate him? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mark, you can let everyone know we can be here tomorrow night. You can start by... You can start at 5:30. Department reports, Director Brown, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Chief Rubeker?
No, sir.
All right. Mike, we have anything else?
Nothing else, David.
Okay. Chief Webb?
Real quick, just want to remind everybody about the Munch and March on Mulberry. We will be shutting the highway down Saturday evening, and then the Fire and Police Station afterwards. We'll have the festivities where we'll have all the kids down there judging bicycles and costumes and all that kind of thing. And so I just wanted to remind everybody about that. I guess the most fitting thing is that they selected our grand marshal for the police department, Scotty Newman, to lead the Munch and March on Mulberry.
Does that have anything to do with the title of the parade?
Yeah.
Okay, Director Harold?
No, sir.
Really? I'll let you sit there for a minute, come back. Finance Director, Ms. Curtis, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Ty, you have anything else you need to bring up before we get to
Yeah, I think this is a good use of time this evening, and I need your assistance. This body approved a siren contract, and it came with, your approval came with a qualification that it have a warranty specifying a certain number of decibel levels. I've received a contract from the vendor, but it does not include that warranty. The vendor's representatives are online today via Zoom, and I just need your feedback as to how important the qualification is to you.
Okay, I'll ask the council members, I think Councilmember Brewster made that motion.
If they can't produce what we asked for, I think we should just kill the bill, go with someone else.
Councilmember James, you had a concern about that as well, I think, didn't you?
I have to agree with Councilmember Brewster.
So if they won't put that in the contract?
We'll find somebody else that will.
I think the reason for the, the main reason for the push on that decibel level on the contract was, was the trial, the test run that we did, wasn't very audible, and of course, it wasn't in the air as high as it was going to be, and it was also a muted level. But that was the reason that council decided to put that in the contract. And, I mean, I agree with it being in the contract as a warranty on that.
So Manager Ross, do you need us to take a vote on, on that, or you just leave?
If you're doubling down on that, so to speak, then we're at an impasse.
I mean, if I'm not mistaken, that, that was a number that, that, that the company came up with that said they could reach this decibel. That wasn't a number that we came up with. So I don't know why it wouldn't
Well, I think that was explained
Wouldn't be available in the contract.
In the meeting, wouldn't it?
Yes.
That was explained.
Well, I personally think that if they can't bring what they're selling, let's put it, put it up here on the poll, that this is going to be on, and let us hear it to see if we agree with it, then I think it kills the deal.
I don't, I don't, I didn't go for it. I agree with him, I don't think that
I didn't either.
They're very confident in what they're trying to sell, I really don't. I mean, I, I don't see, if they were as confident when they were talking that, as they should have been, they wouldn't have any problem bringing it down here to redemonstrate it. But they obviously think it's not going to work too, I think. It's got to be put up to where it's going to be. Right? And then we got to be able to hear. I could have afforded one place for something that didn't happen, so.
Attorney Frost, should we make a motion and second it?
No, I mean, that's what's already, that's what already was passed by this, by this body. I think that the purpose of this discussion tonight was, was to give the representatives another chance to, to, I guess, try to talk to council about the assurances they can give short of the, including that language in the contract.
This would give them an opportunity to respond. If they want to respond, they're on Zoom, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. With me tonight, I do have Patrick Madrid, who's our program manager with Mass Notification Solutions. And we also do have our manufacturer's rep, Kelly Ronnie, on the line, that'd be happy to walk through these assurances with you with the mass notification system using the Vortex Siren.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Patrick, do you want to go first?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, this is Patrick Madrid, I'm the program manager for our mass notification system product line for Global Communications America. I was just listening to you guys speak about the test with our WPS 2905. Our WPS 2905 siren is not the same model of siren that we presented in the quote to you guys. The model siren that we've presented to you in the quote is actually the Wieland Vortex R4. It is Wieland's most powerful siren. And we don't have a demo trailer that has the Vortex model siren mounted onto it. Our demo trailer has the 2905 siren, which does not cover as much area as the Vortex siren does. And in the, in the coverage map that was provided, that's an estimated 70 dB coverage area on a flat terrain map, basically on Google Earth, that shows the estimated 70 dB audio level of the siren. So there's a lot of factors that go into sound and how far sound travels, and environmental factors such as humidity, temperature, terrain, the leaves on the trees, the wind direction. That, that all has a significant impact on how far sound travels. So that's why the coverage map is just an estimate. On a perfectly good day, 70 dB worth of audio will be heard from the siren at, at that covered range. It's, I believe it's 6,100 feet is the 70 dB estimate from Wieland for, for the Vortex siren. We have these systems installed with multiple customers throughout the United States. Peach County, Georgia, has 20 of these. We just installed an additional 10 for them this past year. They, they all have great success ratings. It is a, a product that is made in America that we stand behind. And it's going to get the job done, and it's going to alert your community with, with an audible tone, and it's going to work in conjunction with the reverse 911 system that you have in place currently. And it's going to give you the, the best way to alert your community. Kelly can go into the different ways that the siren works, and the manufacturing process, and kind of go into the, the sound rating and how Wieland comes up with that, if you guys would like to hear that. He works for Wieland, so he's our manufacturer's rep. But that, that's kind of what I wanted to convey to you guys, is that we do, we do have a really good product. It is the Loudoun Siren that Wieland makes, and it's going to alert your community in the best way possible.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Kelly, if you could, if you have anything to add, Kelly? He can hear us, I think.
Mr. Ronnie, if you could, mute yourself, we'll hear you. Thank you.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks for the time again. Appreciate you guys letting us come back and do this, have this discussion. Certainly, like Patrick said, this is, you know, this is Wieland's most popular siren. It's installed, and, you know, around the country, around the world, actually, in many places for outdoor warning. So it's something that's not new to Wieland. It's not a, because of their uptick of severe weather alerts lately, that we decided to get into the siren business. They've been making electronic sirens since the 70s, all manufactured right there in Connecticut or New Hampshire by Wieland employees. The, I guess, the warranty that was spoken about, I guess, meaning the coverage DBs, 70 dB is, is a number that FEMA uses for design purposes. The typical ambient noise level, even just on the outside of the, outside of the building there, even with the highway, is going to run about 58 to 60 dBs just on normal after midnight. So what they want to know is how high, or how far away can we get about 10 dB above ambient noise? That can make an indifferent listener actually hear the tone. So that's kind of where that number comes from. It's not to say that at, at the end of that 2D map with the covers line, that the sound would just, you know, of course cease to exist. It certainly means that 60 dB can be heard just as well for anyone within, within the range of the 60 dB. So 70 dB is a guideline for, for us to begin the design system. It's a good, good way as opposed to just sticking four, five, or 10 of these all the way down the road and over saturate the area. Or it's, or better than saying, hey, we can do five miles, and just put one, and then you not hear it in the middle. So the, the variables within sound are not going to change. Certainly have, like Patrick alluded to, all the weather environments, whether the ambient noise is outside, is it, you know, is it a busy day, is it nighttime, is it during the day? All these things matter. So it's very difficult to say, yes, walk to the end of the coverage map line, hold up a DB leader and say, I'm going to get 70 dBs, because depending on that weather that day, I might get you an 80 dB. I might, you know, so it could be a 60 dB. So you're, you're always going to be really tied down to the environmental factors. But you are going to have those, you know, you're going to have the ability to activate a reliable siren, proven siren system, that's going to alert the entire community. It's a non discriminatory type of alert. Okay, you're not going to need a cell phone, you don't have to have an ear computer. Everyone's going to be able to just learn, and understand that there's severe weather or the activation for what it's for. You're going to get certainly, you know, all American made product. As the manufacturing process goes, Wieland doesn't take parts and pieces from around the world and then send it to you guys and hope it all, you know, it all plugs and plays. The entire process of the manufacturing of the siren is tested throughout. So as soon as it leaves the dock there in Connecticut, it's a working, proud working system, but we can go back to the, to the module inside of the cabinet to find out which employee actually put that in there if there was something wrong. So it's going to, it's going to be backed by the factory five year warranty, which is the longest in the, in the industry. Certainly, you're going to stand behind that to be have, you know, these things all over the country doing, you know, adding a next layer of multiple massification, you know, devices. So you're not just getting siren tone. Maybe I'm indoors, and I'm not proving to that, but I do have my 1111, where I do have a social media account that's alerting me. Well, maybe if I'm outside, I'm at a soccer game, or I'm doing normal activity outside, I don't have that ability to have those things in front of me, but I get the siren turn. So what we're doing is we're making a three legged stool, so to speak. We're covering multiple forms of notification, and then the siren being the oldest and the most reliable.
Okay. Thank you.
Since I'm the one that kind of headed this up, I'd love the chance to speak.
Sure. I think with Vice Mayor Dixon, him and I voted, we didn't vote for it, so I'm going to depend on you for it.
Yeah. Well, it took me two years to get, to get this passed, and it was a rough two years. I fought tooth and nail for a siren system. You all came here and you sold us on quite a few lies, it seems like right now, because you're backpedaling on that now. I'm not happy at all. I took a lot of heat off of a lot of citizens over this, and now you're backpedaling, and oh, now it's a joke. Now it's not going to work like we said it was. I think if you all want to sell this, you'll bring a poll, you'll bring the siren that we're actually going to get, and you'll put it up and you'll test it. You all came up with the decibel, not us. You said we could get that decibel. Now all of a sudden, it's on a good day, on a flat range, you're going to get that decibel. Well, on a good day, I hope we don't need that decibel. I'm not looking for what a range on a good day is. That's not life saving. So I'm, that's where I stand with it.
Oh, amen, Senator.
Anything else?
No.
John, you got any?
It feels like we don't have any. If they have the confidence in what they're selling, and they know that confidence in it, then why shouldn't they want to back it?
So does that leave you, Manager Ross, do you?
I just make a motion to kill that motion for the resolution from last
No, I mean, the resolution's staying, which is, we won't, we won't execute contracts.
Okay. So we're okay with that?
But I'm saying, don't come back. I'm telling them, don't come back with nothing else. You've already proved you can't do it, so it's no more negotiation.
What we need to do?
Nothing, I think.
Nothing?
According to attorney, that was the stipulation, isn't it?
That's people big stuff.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you all for joining us on Zoom. There'll be no action taken with that. We will not execute that contract. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Bibbitt, do you have anything?
Come back to me in a minute.
Okay. Vice Mayor Dixon, you have anything from the Planning Commission?
Yes. On the, the utility board, we authorized a water line replacement.
Use your microphone.
Sorry about that. On the utility board, we authorized the water replacement at Grove Place. So I'm not sure when that will actually begin, but I'm sure it's not going to be long enough. On the Loudoun Regional Planning Commission, we had a site plan for a multifamily apartment complex by Sweetwater Creek Partners here on Highway 72 next to, used to be right, right at Walgreens. It's for 5.39 acres, and they're going to have 96 apartments. Another one was a subdivision flat for Sweetwater Creek, Phase 2, Unit 2, with 13 lots, and they'll, they'll build the street in approximately 3.19 acres.
Okay. Anything else from the Planning Commission?
That's all.
Okay. Johnny, you have any?
No.
Tim, you have anything?
No, I just, I just hope everybody can attend that meeting tomorrow night if you can.
Tomorrow night, 5:30 here.
5:30, huh?
Okay. All right, closing comment, we'll come back.
You don't have any much time to calm down. Okay, so Solid Waste met, we, we had a little bit of discussion regarding the, the contract amendment. I got the feeling that the majority were very much ready to devote on that, but there were several committees that had not met yet. Monro Bay City had not met, and Oakley County Commission had met yet either. So it will go back in November, I believe it's on the 10th, second Tuesday in November, and that, I don't know that it'll go for a vote or not at that moment in time. I do feel that I'm probably going to say, it might be a good time to, to try and do a bid process on that, at least, especially since we're going to be working with a company if not that we know nothing about and we've not worked with before, so.
Okay.
We need to vote on that, will we put that on November workshop?
I don't know that we need to vote on it, do we? I mean
We don't have to vote on it, no.
That, that commission has the authority.
Right, I can, you know, I can take any feedback and whatever. If this committee chooses, or this council, so chooses to vote on it, that's, that's
We'd certainly discuss it at the November workshop, I think.
I think that meeting, they said, if they get a majority vote from each, from the stakeholders, either up or down on it, so I would like
I think you're looking for a show of support for, or against, or where you stand with it. The stakeholders, it's technically, the county has the most stakeholders, or the most members on the committee, put it that way. Myself and Councilmember, or Committee Member Brewster and Mark Stewart, who is for the city of Lenore City, are the representatives for all the stakeholders. But the rest of them are, are one of the, the mayor for the county, seats, different sections of the county.
So you would like for it to be on the agenda for discussion for the workshop, at least?
Please.
Okay. All right. Uh, just closing comments. I don't know if everybody, I'm sure they have looked at the work on Dunbar School.
Oh, yeah.
It looks nice. Thank council for their financial contribution to that. It really is impressive what it looks right now.
That's Johnny.
And Councilmember James as well.
Yeah, me too.
I want to thank the city and LUB for the work they did downtown with all the LED lighting and trimming up some problem trees we had down there.
Looked good.
Yeah. We, we had some definite problems with some overgrown trees that limbs were falling on people's vehicles and things like that. So city and utilities did a great job with that. Also, I did receive the 2020 Battle of the Bridge Dollar from Mayor Akers. It's in the, it's in the plaque with the score on it. So he did present that to me at the Chamber of Commerce event. I don't know if he was ashamed to come here, but anyway, he did present it there. He wanted me to make sure, let everybody know that, that it has been submitted. He does think he's going to win it back next year, but I hope he don't hold his breath for that. So. I'd like to recognize those that's had anniversaries this month. For the city, we had Cody Manus, three years, Public Works Department. Jeff Trout, nine years, Parks and Rec. April Farmer, 14 years, Loudoun Police Department. Jason Lorenz, 14 years, Public Works. Kathy Riddings, 19 years, Customer Service. Larry Jenkins, 24 years, Public Works Department. And Scotty Munchkin Newman, I guess, according to Chief Webb, 25 years, Loudoun Police Department. For LUB, Brad Parks at eight years, wastewater. Nicole Curtis, 10 years. Thank you, Nicole, Director of Finance. Kristi Ingram, 13 years. She worked with the city and its customer service. Larry Miller, 24 years, Water Department. Jim McKee, 24 years, in the warehouse. Greg Brown, 27 years, Electric Department. Bill Watkins, 33 years, Electric Department. And the grandfather, Roy Hughes, 43 years. Oldest, the oldest tenured employee. That's saying something. 43 years of doing anything that you should be commended. So I want to thank all those that were listed. You know, it's a little thing, you may think, just to be recognized, but I mean, I think that's, when you dedicate that much time to your job, I think it should be, should be, take note of it. So I want to thank all those employees for their years of service. Any other closing comments? Councilmember Bibbitt, do you have any closing comments? Vice Mayor Dixon?
Yes, I got some October birthdays for going. We got the police department, Mike Hodges, William Owens, James Page, Kent Russell, Fire Department, Kevin Abercrombie, Douglas Works, Jeffrey LaHawn, Macklin Russell, Recreation Department, Mark Hager.
Woo-hoo.
First game.
LUB Electric Department, Roy Hughes, Chad Booty, and Michael T. Wicker. LUB Water Plant is Cody Watkins. LUB Wastewater Treatment Plant, Andrew B. Belcher, Ray A. Lambert, and Chad Lang. Customer Service is Travis Gray and Daniel J. Silver and Mayor Harris.
Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, getting noted. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Dixon. Councilmember James, do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment. I would like to thank the police department from the bottom of my heart. Those guys, I had a medical emergency about two weeks ago. My blood sugar dropped on me to a little nothing. And I couldn't even dial a phone. And I got home, my wife, she called Scotty Newman. And within 15 minutes, I had two policemen in my house helping me. And they got what I needed and got me out of it. And I want to say thank you because you guys go far beyond what you have to do. You really do. So thank you, thank you very much.
That probably happens every day.
It does. And, and, you know, they don't get the recognition for it, and that's sad.
Thank you, Johnny. Councilmember Brewster, do you have any closing comment?
No, sir. I'm done.
Megan, do you have any questions or comments that you need? Manager Ross?
No, thanks for going to the seat. I'm a clear professional.
Okay. All right, we'll go into executive session. Close this meeting at 7:25, and we'll be back in just a minute.
That was, that was, there was an executive session at the LUB meeting. I'm sorry.
All right, so we won't do that. We have a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Guys, I have a motion and second. Bibbitt and Brewster. Be in busy adjournments.